With our own planning philosophies, objectives, goals, and plans. For reference, the city of Beverly Hills has just adopted a similar type of resolution just a few months ago in September of this year. Consideration of adopting such a resolution could be used as a vetted town policy platform to address future similarly mandated state legislation should it come forward in the future. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Does anybody have any questions? Okay. The, just for everyone's information, the history of how this got onto our agenda is, I was given the Beverly Hills resolution as part of the League of California Cities attendance at the conference I was at, and I passed it on to our housing subcommittee who recommended that we adopt a similar kind of provision. And this goes obviously to some of the issues that we've been struggling with, with SB 50 and the other state mandated provisions regarding changes to our housing without
Proposed state mandated, just proposed state mandated. They're not state mandated just yet.
Well, there are things that are state mandated.
No, but SB 50 is not a state mandate. I just don't want any confusion to people.
Okay, so it would, if either of the members of the subcommittee would like to comment, that would be great.
Bill?
Yeah, so, you know, I had read what Beverly Hills did, and I thought that it was, you know, pretty much spot on. I do believe that we should, we should have some local control. You know, so I take exception to, you know, the state mandating, this is what your community is going to look like, and this is how your community would work. And I think that we should have brought that to our attention. But, you know, and like we've said several times, and we've said to, you know, our senator and, and to our assemblymen, you know, Elizabeth and I at meetings, you know, give us goals and, and we'll work, we'll find a way to meet the goals, but don't tell us, you know, the process in which we will meet the goals. That's, I think that that's a key thing. We all need to chip in, for sure. But there are lots of ways you can chip in, and, you know, we should be able to determine our own fate. So, you know, that was kind of, that's been my comment to Senator Hill and Mark Berman, you know, for a couple of years now, as we were, you know, facing some of these issues. And there are some that are very onerous that are coming, and there are some that are here already that, that, you know, are kind of directing us what to do. So that was my loose sense.
Great. Well, I'll give a comment. In going over the specific resolution, there's a couple of language changes that I would like to have the council consider. So if everyone can look at page four of six, there were two comments that I had. I agree with everything that Bill said. I think that these address some of the issues that we've struggled with, and I think that if cities start to make their interest in local control and not to be dominated by state mandates known, so that the state can communicate what is desired, but not tell us how we have to do it, then we can participate in the process in a much more effective manner. And in the third whereas, it reads, whereas the majority of these bills usurp the authority of local jurisdictions to determine for themselves land use policies. And I thought it wasn't so much determined for themselves, it was really an issue of participating in the process. So I would suggest that we change that language from local jurisdiction to determine for themselves to whereas the majority of these bills assert the authority of local jurisdictions to participate in the process to determine land use policies.
I have a comment about that.
That, that's, that's one suggestion, and I have a follow through exactly the same thing in the next whereas, where it again is to determine for themselves versus participate in the process.
So, to the mayor, to the chair?
Yes.
I have a comment about that and about making that specific language change, because I think it changes the dynamic of the whereas. And one of the things that CKG as a body in all of San Mateo County have been working and talking about doing is that local control is really about determining for themselves how to meet the housing needs of their communities within their communities and not just working, as you were putting it, to work with the state in determining. I think that this language is a much stronger language, and I think that it is more in line with the, what the, all of San Mateo County is trying to do and put forth that local control means local control, and, and each community has, knows really what's best to determine how they can meet housing goals and development within their local communities. I think that for Atherton, we really have to take a very strong position about this because Atherton, I guess, like Beverly Hills and some of our other communities here in San Mateo County, Hillsborough, Woodside, especially Woodside because of their topography. But sometimes, some of these state mandated things are, don't take into consideration the topography or the open land space that would forever change the look and feel of the, of the county. And cities like Riverwood City and San Carlos, they're working within their local jurisdictions to determine for themselves the best land practices. So I'd like to advocate that we probably keep that language in there, because I think it's a stronger language, and we would like more of our local control.
Okay.
My comment.
Great. Are there other comments?
If I could, please, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
You know, then the fourth whereas down at the bottom, you know, I would just change, you know, the wording, it says it's of great importance, A-N-C-E, at the end of import, to the town of Atherton.
Ah.
And, and I, you know, I actually, I agree with both of y'all. You know, I think the mayor's approach as well as Elizabeth's approach, I agree, we need to take a little bit of a stronger, but we don't want to end up being so strong that we're like Newport Beach, where we're going to get a lawsuit filed against us. You know, I think we need to make it clear that, you know, we want the relief and the capability of managing our own destiny, so to speak, and keeping the character of our town, but at the same time, you know, I do think we, we have to recognize, if there's a problem here, we all have, we all have a part to play in trying to fix it. And so I'm not advocating for somebody to come in, and we don't want a developer to be able to just come in and decide what we're going to do, because he's not living here. That's, that's the big issue. You know, some of these laws allow a developer to come in and just make, make the, decide this is what I'm going to build here and, and override what we can do, which I think would be a big problem. So I would like to have it a little bit stronger than, than what you suggested, Mr. Mayor, but I do believe it needs to, you know, but it needs to have a softening character to it. I don't have the words right at my tongue, but perhaps somebody else might be able to, to stick with what we've got, but, you know, soften it.
I'm not sure that, I'm not sure I want to soften it very much, but, and
I'll go right, you know, like, it's, it's the majority, the majority will make a decision. That's fine. I'm happy to leave it the way it is. It's just that I, you know, Atherton's a small town, and we don't want to get on the visibility like, like Newport Beach did with passing not only a resolution, but normans banning some of this stuff. That kind of got
I think we've stopped that, and we're stopped short of that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Carrie or Mike, do you have a comment?
My sense is, I wish I was closer to it, but my gut is closer, is close to what Elizabeth's saying. I think that, you know, I'd like to have us have a strong statement. I believe that that's helpful. I don't know where the line is about what's too strong and what's, you know, not strong enough. So I could live with either, but given it twice, I would probably prefer keeping the language as is for the reasons Elizabeth raised.
Yeah, well, I, I think that the comment about how this is in harmony with what CKG has been advocating makes a lot of sense, so I'm fine to stay with the language as it is.
Thank you. And I think staff has a good sense about all of this, too, because they're very much in touch with what the county is, you know, throughout. And I think Councilmember Wees wants to say something. Sorry.
Carrie? I don't know, the council member Wees was, do you know he was trying to say something, Elizabeth, or?
I thought I heard
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I was just playing with my Mr. Microphone. I agree, keeping, keeping, keeping the language just the same is fine.
Okay, well, before we take a resolution, let me just see if there is any public comment on this matter.
And I don't, I don't have any hands or, or see anybody indicating they'd like to make a comment, sir.
Okay. Can I get a resolution? Or a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution as it's written, "For the City Council of Town of Atherton, expressing support for actions to further strengthen local democracy, authority, and control as related to local zoning and housing issues."
I'd like to make a quick amendment, that we would include also the spelling correction of import to importance.
Of great import?
I think it's importance.
It's of great import. It's, it depends if you're from the north or the south, I think, but it's fine with me either way.
Well, I'd like to export my seconding, if that works.
Weest?
Hi.
Limprous?
Hi.
Widmer?
Yep.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Hi.
And Mayor DeGolia?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we're now moving on to item number four, which is a report on regional housing needs allocation process.
Thank you, Mayor, to me again, Stephanie Davis. So just, I'll give a just bit of a brief background on the regional housing needs allocation or the RENA process itself. So all jurisdictions are required by the state to accommodate for their fair share of regional housing, the assignment of which is determined through RENA process. Specifically, the state's Housing and Community Development Department, or HCD, determines the housing needs by regions throughout the state. So thus, in turn, for Atherton, ABAG, the Association of Bay Area Governments, allocates housing numbers throughout the Bay Area comprised to four different affordability categories in the ranges of very low, low, moderate, and above moderate. So these four level, income levels are in turn determined by the area median income, or the AMI, and they vary by household size. So in 2020, the AMI for a four-person household here in San Mateo County is $174,000. So what that means is, for example, a household of four here in San Mateo County could not make more than about $139,000, nor should be eligible for income housing at the low level. So currently, the town is working towards preparation of its next required housing element update, which would cover the planning cycle of 2023 through 2031. We are working collaboratively, again, with a subregional group called 21 Elements, which is comprised of all the jurisdictions and the county within San Mateo County. The 21 Elements Group is managed by a consulting firm by the names of Baird and Driscoll. So as of last week, ABAG has issued their draft allocation numbers for all the San Mateo County jurisdictions. For Atherton, this draft number equated to a total of 298 units. These 298 units were allocated in the form of 74 units to be dedicated towards very low income, 43 to low, 51 to moderate, and the remaining 130 to above moderate households. So in comparison to the last housing element cycle, in which Atherton was allocated a total of 93 units, to date, within this current housing cycle, Atherton has produced 126 units. So while we produced and actually overproduced the total number allocated to us, we did not hit our very low or low income targets, exceeded our above moderate targets, but most of those were accommodated through replacement units, or basically a teardown of a single-family home and a rebuild. This ability to count such teardown and rebuilds will not count in this upcoming housing cycle based on changes in those laws. One piece I would like to make note of that I think is very important to illustrate is that as part of this housing element update process, while the town is required to demonstrate that it can plan for the housing units allocated to it, it is not required to actually construct those units. So back to the draft 298 units currently allocated to the town. We are currently in a 30-day public comment period on those allocation numbers, in which should the council direct? A letter from the town could be submitted to ABAG commenting on their, both their proposed methodology that generated this allocation, as well as the allocation share specifically. It is staff's understanding that at least a few other jurisdictions within San Mateo County are anticipating to submit such a letter. And if the council did direct such a letter to be submitted, I just want to note, it needs to be submitted to ABAG no later than the 24th of November. Lastly, as it relates to these allocation numbers, the final numbers are anticipated to be assigned in spring of next year. So subsequently, the next steps that staff will be continuing to do will be the continuing working with 21 Elements to analyze site needs, discuss options, develop work plans, and along the way, numerous future opportunities that we would be coming back to the council for direction and discussion along the way. So with that, I would like to introduce Joshua Abrams from the 21 Elements Group and from Baird and Driscoll Consulting Firm. Josh will be giving a brief presentation to discuss in more depth and detail the actual ABAG methodology and RENA allocation process. And then following his presentation, of course, both him and I are available to answer any additional questions that the council may have, although I'm happy to answer any questions at this point, if you'd like, before Josh jumps in here with his presentation.
Okay. Are there any questions from anyone on the council?
I have a question, real quick. So actually, a couple of questions, but one was, you know, some houses actually get rented out, or, or rooms get rented out with access to kitchen, and in fact, the county helps place, you know, for example, you have an older person, and what they do is they, if they have an extra room, they, and they want somebody in their house with them, they, they they help place somebody. Do we get to count those?
Like a shared housing kind of opportunity? Get an additional unit counted for that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And as well as, as well as some people rent their homes, because they're out of town. They, you know, they moved to Europe for a year.
Yeah, Josh, if you want to maybe chime in on that, I don't believe that unless it's a registered ADU, that we would be able to count that shared housing type
That doesn't make, that doesn't make any sense.
That's right. We actually have a wish list project that we haven't gotten to, to advance legislation that would let cities do count home sharing, but as the law is written now, it can't. And then in terms of a rental unit, the law doesn't worry if it's a rental unit or an ownership unit, it really just looks at how many new units are planned for or built.
Okay, well, when you're all built out, then obviously Joshua, it's, you know, there are some houses that are still being built in Atherton, there always will be, but, you know, when you're all built out, we're not like, you know, the farms up in Woodside that have a lot of space, we, we're, we're kind of constrained. And so just one of the things is, I'd like to maybe discuss when we get through is
Well, let me, let me ask
What consideration was there, yeah?
Let me ask the question that follows up to what you raised, Bill, which is, well, Bill talked about rental of a room, and I agree with what he said and where that should go, and would welcome supporting legislation that you mentioned, Joshua, that was, that would enable that to be included in these RENA calculations. But my understanding from what Stephanie said is that the housing element requirement here is basically a land use provision that you authorize, you don't have to actually build it out. And while rental rooms may not qualify, I understand that actual ADUs do qualify, and we've just passed the state code, the mandated state code, to authorize ADUs with a reduced setback in order to encourage, I believe that it's now, an ADU and a, and a junior ADU can be built on every parcel. And we certainly have many parcels that don't have ADUs on them. And if, can, can we use the ability of people to build ADUs on their parcels in Atherton as part of the RENA requirements that we've got?
Sure, should I answer?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, um, yes, yeah, I wasn't sure i- if staff wanted to answer. Absolutely, you can. ADUs, ADUs count for, count for RENA. We're doing actually a statewide survey, and we'll do local surveys to, to figure out what affordability level to, to count them at. The way you count ADUs is you look at recent trends per year, how many ADUs were produced per year, and then you multiply by eight, because it's a eight-year planning period. Just as you were asking the question, I was looking up how many ADUs Atherton has produced recently, and I didn't have time to get to that answer, but maybe staff knows it. And then you multiply by eight, and you can count that many off the top of your, of your RENA target.
So, so just to clarify, so you get to qualify a number of ADUs on an annual basis that equals the number of ADUs built in the last year? But what about, but I thought this was about making housing available. So, I mean, if 20 ADUs got built last year, but there's availability for 200, why would you be limited to 20 for the next year?
The ADU methodology is a little different than the typical methodology for a housing element, and that's because, if you look at it, you would see cities saying, pardon me, we have thousands and thousands of sites, and it just becomes, they just get so many sites that, I think that might be why the state limited it. But in any case, the methodology for ADUs different, is different in it's based on recent trends, rather than the methodology for general sites, which is based on their potential density and their, their potential redevelopment.
Okay. May I ask a follow-up question?
Yep.
Thank you. So, you know, Stephanie pointed out, you know, the housing available or plan to be available, et cetera, based on, on potential wages, right, their earnings. How do we know what those earnings are? Do we have to post them, or do, you know, I just don't see. Plus, you know, there's a grand jury report that we just distributed yesterday that said, you know, what can we do to qualify unpermitted homes and unpermitted shacks that we could use as, as housing with those counts? But they're unpermitted. I mean, all, I mean, there's, there's a lot of questions of how you actually, what you actually include and what you don't include, and then how you get the numbers to fill in all those different categories. So Josh, can you answer the salary, the salary question?
Sure, there's, so there's two questions, let's, let's do them one after the other. The first is, my understanding is, you don't, well, how do you get the salary assumptions? You don't use the salary assumptions, you don't need to. The, the way you typically show affordability is, well, ADUs, the way you typically show what affordability level they count for is what level they've been rented out in past years, and, and then, so we'll do a survey about that. So we'll just plug them in based on, and some of them have been available for free for domestic help or for family members, and we'll count those as very low income. So that's how you, that's how, that, and then the assumptions are sometimes a little different, they're, they're a little bit different for, for market rate units. I can answer that part two, if you want. And I forgot in the second half, I, I was like, I'm not going to forget it, but I did forget it. Could you please repeat the second half of your question?
The, the grand jury is suggesting that if, if somebody has unpermitted buildings on their, on their property, that the, the town authorized them or permit them, and then allow them to be used for, if, if they're going to be used for housing. So they're already built, they were nonpermitted, now they're suddenly getting a magic wand that permits them, and, and, but they have to be available for somebody to live in. And so, you know, do those count?
We've had mixed success, the law is, is a little silent on that point, we've had mixed success with HCD counting them or not counting them. That's the short answer. The log answer is a lot longer, that's the short answer.
No, that's fine, thank you very much. I'll stop instantly. Do you have a question?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Okay, so, um, it's along the same lines as what that council member Widmer was talking about, the permanent or nonpermitted. A lot of people clearly have pool houses that they've turned into a living quarter for, you know, a family member or renting it out, and that is not an allowable housing unit. And we talked at one time about, in fact, we did a survey that we sent out to people, and asking them if they would let us know if they had a pool house. And anyway, the survey kind of backed up, because nobody wanted to come clean to the point that they had a pool house in their, on their property that they were actually renting out illegally. And if we made it legal to rent it out, then would it be, could it be applied to our housing element numbers? So I guess that's a new question that we're, we're going to raise again, especially if some of these pool houses can be classified as an ADU.
I would say that most cities, if you don't call attention to the fact that it was an existing nonconforming or, or unpermitted structure, and you just point out that it got its permit to be an ADU, most cities will just end up getting counted that way. Where cities might run into trouble is, if you want, if you want to embark on a program to legalize second units of ADUs, and you want to count additional ones beyond your trend, beyond recent trends, that's where, though I was saying, we've had mixed success with HCD.
If I can, Mayor, if I can just add a little bit of context, too. So with our RENA numbers, what we're really looking RENA numbers, what we're really looking for is, we're looking, well, not we, but ABAG is looking for cities within its community to increase the provision of predominantly affordable housing, because most communities don't have an issue with market level. They have a significant need for low income and very low income. And the question was asked, who determines affordability? And, um, the, the ABAG would work with the Housing Methodology Committee to determine median incomes affordability, and it establishes a range of salaries. Then we know what the affordability rate is. And what we have to do, the law as it is today, although I can't say what it's going to be, you know, in a couple of years from now, is the, we are charged with making, uh, our zoning accommodate the RENA numbers. We are not at this time responsible for actually constructing affordable housing, nor are we responsible for, um, you know, getting developers to build that. However, uh, as you may have read through the grand jury report, which is going to come before you, um, in these new laws, the accessory dwelling units, JADUs, are creative solutions towards solving that problem. They're not one-to-one ratios. So a one ADU isn't going to mean the same as one very low income housing, but it will contribute to Atherton demonstrating compliance with its, um, its RENA obligations.
So, so Mona, just, this, okay, but.
I have a comment. Mona, just following up.
Before we go on to make comments, if there's any questions, let's do that. And then I'll take public comment.
Yeah. So Mike, I have a comment for Mona.
Yeah. So. Okay. So let's see if there's any public comment on this matter. And then you guys can make, I'll bring it back.
I have to remember what I was going to ask her.
Mr. Mayor, don't forget Joshua has a PowerPoint presentation as part of this item.
Yeah, we looked at it.
We should, we should have him present it and then ask for public comments.
All right. That's a good idea. We'll hold the rest of our comments slash questions for, for Josh to do what he actually.
Okay. Uh, Joshua, do you want to, do you want to make your presentation, Joshua?
So that would be great. I think we got too excited. And it was a good discussion, but why don't I go through it? Then maybe it'll, if there's more questions, I'm happy to answer them. Uh, well, thank you, Mayor and CADA member. Again, my name is Josh Abrams, and I'm going to be updating everyone in the RENA process. For me, uh, start with the context, which is 21 Elements is a multi-city collaboration. We're funded by all the cities and towns and the county and, and the CCAG, the Congestion Management Agency. To be clear, we don't advocate, but rather we support staff and cities on policies that they want to adopt. And obviously, we're really busy helping cities with housing elements right now. I'll note that with our partner Home for All, we just received our third best practice award for our work promoting accessory dwelling units, ADUs. Uh, one thing that I didn't put on the slide is all the good work of Home for All and 21 Elements and generally because, and the jurisdictions in San Mateo County, 21 Elements, I'm sorry, San Mateo County has a generally a pro, a positive, pro-housing reputation in the region, in the state. And although that's not a formal part of the housing element process, it definitely helps. When we make assumptions, when we, for instance, make assumptions about the ADU affordability, we'll get less scrutiny from, from the state because they know that traditionally San Mateo County has been more pro-housing than, than some of its, some of its neighbors. The agenda, I'm going to make sure everyone knows what a housing element is. Perhaps there's some people in the audience, or it's people who haven't been through a cycle before. Do a little bit of context about, about RENA, this housing element cycle, and then talk some about the methodology and timing. So a housing element, it's, it's a local plan. And it hurts a local that plan. It's a part of the general plan that guides future growth in the, in the jurisdiction, in the town. And there's a bunch of sections that are really all local that, that the state isn't even super concerned with about what are the needs? What does our population look like? And how do we meet the needs of our population as they grow and age and change? But there are state requirements, and there is a requirement that housing elements are certified by, by the state. And that's unlike other parts of the, the general plan. So one of the big ones of this course is called the Regional Housing Needs Allocation, or the RENA. And that's how much land you have available for housing. And you need to have more sites, more land available for housing than whatever your target is, whatever your RENA is or your target. I want to make sure before we get into the specific RENA, there's a couple of concepts that are going to come up. The first is Plan Bay Area. Plan Bay Area is, uh, it's a multi-year future-oriented visioning about what, what the Bay Area will look like in 2050. It covers a bunch of things, including transportation, housing, revenue, social services, lots and lots of pieces. But that's, it's kind of a visioning exercise. Where do we think growth, growth will grow? Where do we think, what new policies will be adopted? So remember that for a few moments. Talk briefly about the Southern California experience because this, we were all a little bit nervous when the Southern California jurisdictions, particularly the smaller ones, started getting their numbers. You saw really dramatic increases, like percentages, it totally makes sense to talk about percentages, like 10,000% increase or something. Um, so we, it was a little bit, it wasn't clear how much to sound the alarm and how much to wait to see what ABAG's number was, uh, uh, for, for the San Mateo or for the, for this region. But anyway, so that in, it just, remember the context of the Southern California small jurisdictions have it, have much, much higher increases. And then, um, oh, there was a question about what are the, what, what are there, there's some objectives that are required by state legislation in terms of dividing up that RENA. And if you guys, if, if there's a preference to go into more detail, I have more details about this, um, but it quickly gets super nitty gritty and super, um, it's hard to make it interesting. But the state requirements are, it has to be equitable, the RENA methodology has to be equitable, promote infill, reduce greenhouse gases, promote a jobs housing fit, balance existing income disparities. So if an income is higher area income or low income, balance that with what the targets are, and then affirmatively further fair housing. And that means make sure you are reaching out to all members of the community and also make sure that, that wherever, whatever decisions you're making aren't adversely affecting low income or minority communities. Okay. So with that as background, there was a, there was a committee that met maybe 15 times. I was on it until ABAG determined I had a conflict of interest, but San Mateo County had three representatives on it, and they made a recommendation to the, to the housing committee and then the executive board about what factors to include. They started with Plan Bay Area, so that the 2050 household populations. So that was, that was kind of their, that was, that was where everyone's number started. And then there were two things that pushed your number up or down. Job proximity, if you were near job centers, you got, your number got higher than what Plan Bay Area would have predicted for 2050. And high opportunity areas, um, if that, and that means areas that there's a bunch of criteria for high opportunity areas, and it's used for a bunch of things in the state, but it's good schools, low environmental problems, high health outcomes. It's a whole bunch of different, different, um, criteria. But so high opportunity areas got there, got, got a higher number too. I should say, the Plan Bay Area is a 50 is a 30-year plan. So those targets were scaled down because RENA is a eight-year plan. To put it in a regional context, these are that, what the RENA was and versus the, the county's population. If I had to redo it, I would probably do it as, as households because RENA talks about households, but, but population gives you a pretty good sense. So you can see Alameda has a slightly higher share of the population than the RENA. You could think of that as the RENA methodology went light on Alameda County, or particularly Contra Costa County, because it was, it's not job-rich and because there's a lot of existing low-income areas that weren't high opportunity areas. Santa Clara, the methodology went hard on. You can see it has a much higher share of its, of, of numbers. San Mateo is a little bit hard. Um, I think we have 9.5% of the regional population and 11% of the, the RENA allocations. So it, it, and again, that, that has to do with those two factors about, about, uh, access to jobs. We are job-rich and, um, the high opportunity areas. The jurisdiction-specific numbers, Atherton, I think, I think why it's a little hard for people is because everyone in the whole Bay Area, the numbers increased significantly. Atherton went from 93 to this cycle being 298, the, which is, um, the county, the county average was 195% increase. Atherton's was a 220% increase. So a little, a little higher than the county average and also a little higher than the, the regional, regional increase. Timeline. So I, um, I think we, we mentioned this a little bit, but we're here, the draft methodology is at, which gives you a pretty good hint at the allocations. Now, if Plan Bay Area changes or other things change, the methodology will change because Plan Bay Area is an input. And we're in this 30-day review period where jurisdictions can send, consent comment letters. Um, I know there's definitely a push among some jurisdictions in, in the East Bay to push for higher numbers, particularly in the South Bay, because they feel like they're, they're job-rich. Um, and I, I haven't surveyed, we could, if people are interested, we could survey what other jurisdictions in San Mateo County are doing in terms of, of sending letters. Oh, and then ABAG's going to present their methodology on November 12th at the, the CCAG meeting. So if you want a deeper dive into the methodology, you're welcome to, uh, to attend that. They, they'll be shortly reaching out through city managers to alert everyone to that, to that meeting. Oh, and that's all my, those are all my slides. I'm happy to answer questions.
Joshua, is that your baby?
It is my baby. She's a little older now.
Okay. What's, what's in the guitar?
I don't know. She's, I think it was her reflection. I'm not sure.
Any specific questions for Joshua before I take public comment?
Yeah, yeah, I do. I guess again, it's, you know, it's on the salary level and, and the opportunity. So there's not a whole lot of jobs here in Atherton. There's gardeners, people come into town to do construction, and, uh, that's about it. The, you know, the teachers that teach at the college are housed at the college, many of them are. And the teachers that, uh, you know, San Mateo that are at the, that the other private schools probably are commuting, or they live in a nearby community. Um, many people, if they have a, if they have a pool house and they're renting it, which many of them are, they're renting it to Stanford students. So, so I guess those would count as low income. Is that correct?
There's two questions. I mean, one is, is who's the, what's the income of the occupant? But in terms of meeting your RENA, the, the state is not so worried about the actual occupant. It's, it, it's more concerned about what level that unit's likely to rent at. So if we can show a pattern of Atherton homeowners renting at prices that low income people can afford, then we'll be able to count those ADUs as low in, as likely to be low income.
Can I add one, one comment on that? So what we typically do, uh, at the staff level is when an application is submitted for an ADU, we have a form attached to it that requests that the project applicant give, uh, some feedback as to how much they intend to rent that ADU out at. Uh, the majority of responses that we get back do note that the rent is zero or free, of which we then count those as very low. And that traditionally has been the majority of ADUs, at least that I've seen in the last couple of years here in town.
And then what we'll do is we'll write up that methodology, taking the, the towns, the towns documentation and any, any other sources of information we can get, and go to HCD and make the case about what assumptions are realistic to make and get that pre-approved by the, the state. So when the, when the town submits its housing element, they know they're not going to get pushed back about the assumptions.
Oh, one, one additional question. So on slide five, where you talk about the, the housing needs allocation and was taking into consideration the inventory of the site. And as we've discussed previously, there's, all sites are built out. It's not like we have commercial that is now defunct and, you know, like over at Redwood City, some of the businesses, you know, move out, out and they can build a high-rise. Uh, so how was that, how did I, that affect our number, which now still is very, very large, where we don't have jobs here specifically?
So, so that would be, there's, there's two parts. Let's go back to, there's two parts. There's what, what assumption Plan Bay Area had for how many, how many housing units there would be in Atherton. That is kind of, Plan Bay Area makes it a little hard. They don't, they don't want people to look, they, they, at the jurisdiction-specific numbers. They want people to think more about the region. So I'm actually, we could get it. I'm actually not, I don't know. It takes some work to get the, what protect, what's the projection for Atherton for, um, for Plan Bay Area? And then that's the job, and then whatever that was, it's the job proximity and high opportunity areas that pushed the number higher than just based, the base projection based on Plan Bay Area.
Yeah. So, so the only, the only reason I'm asking this question is because we had a presentation on this a number of years ago. Uh, an ABAG representative went through it and, you know, we looked at it and they projected, like many people do, that our community would grow at the same rate as other communities. Well, it's not because we've been the same number of people and the same number of houses for years. We've been fully built out. And so actually, in some cases, we have a lower population than we did a few years ago. So our population is steady as opposed to up and goes down. And then secondly, it was the question about the jobs. They projected we were going to have a lot of jobs here. And we said, well, how, how is that going to happen? Because we have no commercial here. And so, and there wasn't an answer. It was just that they took a ratio that everybody else gets and they just applied it to our numbers. And if that's what happened, then that doesn't seem right.
The, the, the method, methodology this year is jurisdiction-specific. So they, they, as much as there's data available, including land use data on a jurisdiction-specific level, they, they model based on that. It's possible in some cases, if you share a zip code with other jurisdictions, or there's just not data available on too small an area, sometimes it can get hard to do the modeling. But their aim, their goal was definitely to be jurisdiction-specific in their modeling. Whether or not they got it right, um, that, that's a, that's a different question. I don't, I don't, I'm not, I'm not a modeling expert, so I can't comment to that.
Yeah. So, so you mentioned, you know, if we share as, if our zip code actually crosses a border, is, so is this allocation by zip code?
No, I was just thinking, I was just trying to brainstorm. That might not even be a factor. I was just trying, and I probably shouldn't have gone there because I don't know the ma, the, the, the modeling software. I was just trying to brainstorm anything that might not happen at a jurisdiction level. They really tried to be jurisdiction-specific and the model is, doesn't go by zip code. It goes, it really is jurisdiction-specific.
Yeah. We, we don't share a zip code with anybody else. Okay. And I think we're kind of getting into the weeds here. So I remember the question I was going to ask Mona because she made a comment. If I may, is this time for it or no?
If it's, if it's a question of clarification, yes, I, but I'd like to take public comment as soon as I can. So you, you tell me.
It was, it was, it was a question in, in regards to something that she said, you know, in her report and, uh, about, um, that what RENA really wants us to do is, um, uh, actually maybe not build these projects, but we have to, uh, demonstrate that they can be zoned for. And my comment and question is, if we rezone or zone for these high density, then wouldn't that just give a developer an opportunity to legally come and, uh, demand that he, uh, he, she, they, uh, develop these high-density projects? Because we rezone for them. It's like, they build it. If they zone it, they will build it.
Yes. Yes. I mean, and, but that's the point, right? We can't just zone it with the hopes that no one's going to come in and, and build multifamily. That, but the ask here is that the local government, um, make land or make land available, provide the opportunities. So the one way that Atherton has accomplished that right now is by adopting the ADH/ADU ordinance, which in accordance with Government Code Section 65,400, can be, can count towards our affordability requirements.
Okay. But that's, that's a zoning within our single-family residence environment and not.
There's nothing.
Rezoning.
I didn't hear that there's any requirement to create multifamily. I didn't hear that there's any requirement to create multifamily zoning.
No, there is not a requirement to do that. We still, till this day, have the ability to provide opportunities for the provision for arena numbers in any way that we think is appropriate. So what you are hearing is sort of a menu of options right now. The state has not come in yet and telling us how we have to accomplish that.
Right. Okay, let me see if any public comment on this item. I don't see any.
And no, Mayor, I don't, I don't see any. We only have Angela Schwartz and Mr. Polito that I can see that are joining the call from the public. So.
Great. Okay. So further comments from the council? I mean, I, I'll, I'll give a comment. It looks to me like, given the demographic of Atherton, that there's basically three possibilities for us to enable the, the type of housing that's required, which is from very low income to above moderate income housing. And they are either some kind of dorm-type arrangement at Menlo College, which is the only live-in school that we've got. And we've seen that activity in the past. That would be one. The most obvious one are the ADUs. We've got twenty-five-hundred homes in the town and most of them could build ADUs. I'm sure that many of them already have ADUs. I don't know what that number is. I don't know how many were built in the last year. So if they're doing the analysis based on eight times the number from the last year, that's going to limit a number, but we should certainly enable that number. And then third, there, there's been lots of discussion at both the private schools and the public schools, but I don't think we're, we, we have any ability to do anything with the public schools. But we could enable the private schools to put, you know, employee housing, teacher housing on their locations. And those, those three items are the only ones that I can think of that are reasonable because I don't think any of us are going to support some zoning that would allow multifamily housing.
So through the mayor, could we get Stephanie to comment on your dorm-type housing?
Yeah. So there, there was a question that the recently approved dorms at Menlo College, do those count? And the answer is no. These types of group porter facilities that do not have kitchens or bathrooms do not count. However, the sort of new modern apartment-style dormitory layouts that you can see in other universities where it's maybe a bedroom shared with a kitchen and bathroom-type facility, those would indeed could count in the future. And then to the point of what other options are there, that it will be challenging, but we do expect a staff to come back to the council through the housing element process to evaluate any other opportunities beyond those of the ADUs, how those may be reshaped, how to try and retain the single-family character with our existing land use patterns and parcel configurations and what that may look like. And, and hearing the council of trying not to go down the path of any type of rezoning or upzoning for a higher density, but a ma, a maintenance of single-family, but how we could potentially even increase that. Again, not tonight, or not today, here to try to flush out those opportunities, but that will be discussions that will be had as we continue in this housing element process.
Thank you, Stephanie. Follow on, does anyone know what the layout of the new dorm at Menlo College looks like? And have we talked to the developers of the, this new dorm? And I know they've talked about three hundred and sixty-seven. Well, I haven't looked at the plans. So, I mean, are, would they qualify? Can staff take a look and see if any of those would qualify?
I can tell you the maj, maj, majority of them don't qualify, but there are.
That's what I would think.
There are a few that are, have kitchenettes in there, probably are going to be housing of. Or, or, or an RA. So a couple of them, you know, but it's very few.
Not many. Yeah. So.
That staff can elaborate a bit on the dorm situation rather than council because they have submitted their application and it's gone through a process already.
It has. And the current configuration, again, I, I don't have the plans in front of me, but beyond the few units that council member Whitmer referred to, they do not count. They would not count in their current floor plan configuration as a housing unit.
So we really don't get a lot of benefit, which was unfortunate because I think that part of the reason we wanted to approve that was that it was inferred that that would go towards our housing element numbers.
And also Rick mentioned other schools, private school, I guess, I assume Menlo Sacred Heart. Is, is there any specific proposal there to provide housing of any sort there?
I don't, there, there's no current proposal that's been submitted to the town to date. However, with that said, all of the private schools do have adopted master plans that do discuss or identify the potential for some type of onsite housing in the future. You know, the, the feasibility and the timeframe, I, I wouldn't be able to speak on. I again, don't, have not heard such from any of them. But they integrated into their long-range planning, potentially long, in long-range planning efforts.
Right. But Stephanie, just please clarify for me. It's not that there needs to be a master plan or proposal from the schools. The issue here is, do we as the authorizing body responsible for this jurisdiction create a system that would enable them to do something, right? It doesn't have to be built. So there doesn't have to be somebody coming forward with a plan to actually build the thing or to propose that they want to be able to build it. We, if, we, we could authorize something in terms of the land use and that would, that in and of itself, even if they choose not to do it, would qualify for Rena.
That's correct. Our land use regulatory tools need to be able to demonstrate that such housing could be accommodated on these lands.
And I'll just add, I'll just add to that question that there is the potential that the state doesn't think those units are likely to develop. In the year period, there could be some pushback and some negotiation that we would have to do with the state about whether or not those, those count.
Okay, I also ask about Oakwood and how that plays into this. And is there anything?
We count it.
Yeah, senior housing.
We count it.
Okay, because they don't have the, the kitchen units you were talking about.
That's different.
Yeah, we got senior housing over at Sacred Heart.
Yeah, it's different. And, you know, I think we have to be really, really careful about kind of rezoning Sacred Heart because if you look at what they've got now, they're really pretty much fully built out. And if they were going to build any kind of additional student housing or low and moderate income housing, which I find that an oxymoron a little bit, but they would all, yeah, they would have to go up, you know?
Or down.
Okay.
That's how you get behind the, the height requirement.
Okay, what's next?
Do we, no further comments? I, I think this was just a discussion, right?
It, it was just a discussion, but if you would like staff to put together some sort of correspondence back to A-BAG with respect to our concerns about calculation of jobs or concerns about the number and things like that, we can do that if you like. As Stephanie mentioned, it has a due date of the twenty-fourth of November. Is that correct, Stephanie?
That's correct.
So we could put it on to the November agenda for review of a draft letter of some kind, if the council would like that.
Sounds like that.
Yeah, I think, I think we should. Yeah. And I think that, I think Joshua mentioned that, you know, he would provide us access to what other jurisdictions have already prepared. That would be good to see what they're saying. I think one of the key things is, you know, obviously the, also the built-out, fully built-out is, is something we should bring up because it was one of their criteria. But, but yeah, we should send a letter, but it'd be, it'd be good to see these other ones before we did it. I don't think, you know, it's, it's necessary, but.
And we can craft a draft, bring it back to you on the sixteenth, and you can take a look at it and wordsmith it and we'll send it off.
Okay, but get, but get from Josh what the other guys sent in.
Also, I could, I mean, from the C-CAG meeting on the twelfth, I'll raise the question of how other jurisdictions are handling this and if they've got their letters that they're going to be sending. And I'll see if I can get those before the twelfth, on the twelfth.
All right. And we have a meeting with community development directors tomorrow, so I will survey them about who's, who's written and see if we can get copies that way, too.
Okay.
Good.
Thank you, Josh.
All right. Thank you, everybody.
Yeah.
Great. Good discussion. Let's move on to item number five.
This one's Mr. Barone for it's just informational only. You can go through a very brief staff report, but it's provided for the council's information. Robert?
Yes, good. Thank you, George. Good evening, council. Good evening, Mayor, council, members of the public. Today is just item five. It's informational only. It's a review and discuss the cash flow for the Town Center project. The council recalls that it's May twentieth, council meeting, the council, city council reviewed and discussed the cash flow and financing plan of the Town Center project. On June eleventh, two thousand twenty, the town closed on cash flow financing with Capital One Bank for the Town Center project. Lease financing of seven point six eight million is consisting of seven point five million in project proceeds and a hundred and sixty-four thousand in cost of issuance. It's mentioned in earlier, today attached to the cash flow spreadsheet reflects this, reflects seven point five million in financing proceeds, COP leasing financing payments, town bayfront canal participation, and any major change orders from the project. One item, some highlights to point out is E-RAF. In previous forecasts, the E-RAF projections through fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two decreased by approximately five hundred and thirty-seven thousand. It still remains, and E-RAF still remains under threat at the state level. As of the state comptroller's office is working on guidelines that will be used to determine school district E-RAF. And those guidelines are supposed to come out December two thousand twenty, next month. And they will be effective for fiscal year nine, two thousand nineteen, twenty, and thereafter. We received our fiscal year twenty, twenty-one allocation projection for excess E-RAF. And it's reasonably anticipated at one million four hundred and fifty-five thousand for the fiscal year, an increase of a hundred and forty-two thousand over the April two thousand twenty forecast. The spreadsheet continues to project E-RAF in January two thousand twenty-two at one point one million. And just want to note that future years of E-RAF are not projected for purposes of this spreadsheet as the full impact of the state takeaway is unknown. Another additional highlight is the West Base Sanitation District. We received their reimbursement for the installation of sanitary sewer system for the project, and that was five hundred and seventeen thousand. Other items to note is the COP of, of the payments on the project. It's a ten-year financing tool with a five-year call option and an average annual debt service at eight hundred and sixty-one thousand. That's listed in our cash flow spreadsheet and our first payment, semi-annual payment is December two thousand twenty. The town anticipates that pay that off in June two thousand twenty-five and will exercise the call option and retire, retire the COP. Just wanted to note that the total lease financing payments through the term is eight point five million. Again, listed, discussed earlier, the Bayfront, Bayfront Canal project. It's a one point three five million loan that the town will receive. Estimated annual payments are expected at a hundred and fifty thousand and those are built into the cash flow spreadsheet. Again, staff projects that the town will retire this debt along with the COP by June of two thousand twenty-five. Donations are listed in there, a total of seven hundred and ninety thousand in donations from various organizations are in the cash flow spreadsheet. Also wanted to note that separate from the cash flow spreadsheet is the Atherton Library funding that's listed in your staff report to facilitate the completion of the project and investment of five million three hundred and ninety-one thousand is required to cover the remaining anticipated construction contingency costs. Those will be that the, the report was approved. The financial report was approved and sent to the Library JPA, which will approve the report shortly in the next couple of days. And that concludes my staff report. Open it up for any questions.
Questions of clarification for Robert?
Why didn't we get a PowerPoint?
I just want to say, I love, I love the big print on the spreadsheets. Thank you guys very, very much for this. It's really helpful.
You're welcome.
It looks nice, too.
Try to make it look nice. Thank you so much. Yes. And the, and yeah, tried to not have a PowerPoint today. So as you can see, we're successful.
Only one PowerPoint per meeting, okay?
Sounds good to me.
Robert, I have two questions. The first is, in the paragraph on page two, under analysis regarding E-RAF, you say that in June, the Legislative Analysis Office issued an opinion that, that five E-RAF counties have miscalculated E-RAF allocations. How did, will this impact us?
Um, the, with the guidelines that come out in December twenty, it'll impact us for nineteen fiscal year nineteen, twenty and, and the years going forward. And I think that's where we have one point one million in two thousand twenty-two. I, I think that impact, we've already projected that in. The impact future is we're, right now, we're saying no more E-RAF after fiscal year twenty-two.
But we don't have any reason.
We should.
There, there's, there's no guidance that we've gotten from the state to indicate that.
Correct.
Being conservative on.
Correct. Yes. And then once that comes out.
Where my question, where my question comes from is that, in fact, we had underestimated the E-RAF that we got for twenty twenty-one, which we got the full amount, right? Of one million four hundred and fifty-five thousand.
Uh, pretty, we pretty much, and, and in communication with the county, they're still hesitant to say that we'll get, continue to get E-RAF at our historical pace. So we made the adjustments, but it came in a little higher or what we kind of anticipated in our first cash flow analysis. Anticipation is possibly we could get more in, in twenty twenty-two. But until the guidelines come out, I, I, you know, I feel confident that what we have right now is, is, is pretty good projection. And if, if we can project out future years in E-RAF, we will update the cash flow. And, and it's all predicated on what happens in December.
Okay, those got another question, then I have a second question.
Yeah. So, so Robert, is, is the under calculation of the E-RAF due to the under, or non-funding of the charter schools? Is that what that's about? And that, you know, we have to cover the cost of the charter, you know, the extra costs of the charter schools? There aren't that many charter schools. So I can't see that it would take all the money.
Correct. And, and in anticipation of that, the county and all the counties in excess that have excess reserve are holding reserves in anticipation to figure out once that guy, those guidelines come out, they're, you know, the flip side is if, you know, they don't withhold reserves and they pass all our E-RAF and they come back and say, oh, we overpaid you. They don't want agencies to have that happen. So it, and yes, the, the decrease is due to the, the figuring out the payment of the charter schools. Once that is figured out, there is anticipation that the reserves they withheld will help for the nineteen, twenty and, and hopefully there could be some adjustments to agencies in the positive. But yeah, they, they withheld reserves and, and the reduction is because of that, not knowing what, what the calculation will be and what the state guidelines will say. But the good thing is it's from fiscal, for fiscal year nineteen, twenty. And going forward, there was discussions that it was going back all the way to fiscal years seventeen, eighteen on the calculations.
Oh, I thought that, I thought that it was reported, I guess, I heard from the county that. Oh, I thought that, I thought that it was reported, I guess, I heard from the county that, that there wasn't going to be back pay, but they would start collecting it from now, right? We're not going to go backwards and have to owe money for the previous years.
Correct. And, and that's why there's the reserve holdback and, and the reduction currently right now in ERAF. Yeah, I, I think once, just, you know, next month comes around, there'll be some guidelines and then they'll take the county some time to digest that and come up with their calculations. I think maybe by January, we'll kind of get an understanding what the future years will be for 21, 22, at least for ERAF. And if there, if there's any reserves that will be released to agencies.
Okay, thanks.
Robert, I have a question. Which is under the paragraph on page three of five on Bayfront Canal, you talk about the terms of the loan with the Bayfront Canal. And in the very last line, you state that staff project, it's a 10 year loan at 2% interest. And we begin the payment in December 2021, and we've all discussed that previously. But the thing that raised my antenna and is the source of my question is the last sentence, which says staff projects that the town will retire this debt along with the COP in June 2025. The, the COP, we've decided we're going to pay off in five years because we've got higher interest and, and we want to pay it off and, and we structured it to be paid off in five years. But I'm not, I mean, we, we haven't talked about paying off the loan to the county early and that loan is a 10 year loan at very, very low interest. So I'm not sure why we're assuming we're definitely going to be paying that off.
It's not, it's not.
Correct. And I think for.
Yeah.
Go ahead, George.
Not a definite. It's, it's projected in our cash flow only because we don't like to carry debt. And it's the town council's policy not to carry debt. They made an exception for these two items. So the sooner we can pay them off, the better with respect to our balance sheet.
What would be the difference if we stretched it out?
150,000.
Loan from the county. I don't, I'm not suggesting instead of the COP.
No, the loan from the county.
Yeah. I mean, it's not, the payoff would be $901,000 in, in fiscal year in June 2025. We stretched that out and George just mentioned it would be 150,000, 50,000 per year. And, and again, this is just put in the, for the cash flow purposes, we don't want to carry on debt. And two, for the, the cash flow spreadsheet to show, you know, on that last year of the cash flow for the COP. If plugging in the, the remaining amount on the Bayfront Canal just is reflective of, of, of taking that same sentiment. But it, it is a 10 year.
Okay. Other questions? Seeing none, let's see if there's any public comment. I don't see any public comment on this.
No, sir. I don't have any. I know that we still have Mr. Palito and Emily Mybok on the call, but.
And bring it back for comment. Excuse me?
No, I had nothing.
All right. So there's no action, right? All right. Second.
Okay. I think that's the end of the meeting.